Welcome, everybody, to our city council meeting tonight. Tonight's invocation will be given by Chaplain Kathleen Lawler, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Mayor, council members, city administration. It's always a privilege to represent our faith community, even at the last moment. So, let's pray. Lord God, we celebrate tonight all the good that you're doing in our community, and we thank you for our leaders, and I just pray a blessing on the work of their hands as they talk and discuss, listen, share, and decide on important issues that affect our community, Lord. Guide their discussion, and may you have your way. And again, we celebrate everything here tonight. Our officers, yeah, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kathleen. Today is Wednesday, November 15th. I'd like to call this meeting into order. Abby, would you please take roll call?
Present.
Here.
Here.
Here. Next, we approve the agenda. Actions by the council to approve the agenda or to make modifications. Items that can be added to the agenda is constrained by state law. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have presentations. Tonight, we have ceremonial presentation of state funding of $350,000 for a new fire, for a new Kingsburg fire engine, sponsored by California State Assemblyman Devin Mathis. Devin, would you please come forward with your staff?
All right, so, really, I just, honestly, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you, I want to thank the city council, the city manager, the clerks, and really, all of our staff. Every year, I do a policy pod where I reach out, and I reach out to pretty much everybody, different sections, and kind of go, what do y'all need? What do I need to do for you this next year in Sacramento? I know we were just talking before chambers about the meeting coming up, and it came up that, hey, we need a new fire truck. And so, that has been a priority, and it's not every day that us here in the San Joaquin Valley get anything out of Sacramento. And so, it's nice to get a little return on investment of our tax dollars and everything that we work hard for. And for me, it's when the city's in need, and this is kind of the least that we can do, is make sure that you guys can keep rolling, that we can make sure that fire, which is a huge necessity that their folks are taking care of, and knowing that this will help keep the community safe and provide the support that's needed. It's, dude, I'm just doing my job, man. My job is to help out and help you guys get what you need. So, we're here to do that tonight, and thank you guys for the partnership in doing so. And Chief, congratulations.
Appreciate it.
On the new truck.
Thank you.
You'll have to let me know when you get it.
Oh, absolutely. This build time is three total years.
The Kingsburg Fire Department does appreciate your office for doing this for us. Without this funding, it would take us a lot longer to purchase it. It is literally build time of 72 months, which is, sorry, not 72 months, 36 months. And it's about four months delayed now, so we're looking at 40 months. And that was 14 months ago. So, it literally takes that long, and this is a portion of now what it costs of about a million dollars for the fire engine itself. Not the one with the ladder. One with a ladder on top is $2 million. So, it's ridiculously expensive, and these go a long ways to providing infrastructure for us to keep our community safe. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yes, please.
Get the mayor here. How about, Mayor? Get it here with Chief. Where else you guys?
I'll take a step forward.
The tall guy's in the back.
Right in the middle. She's hiding. There she is.
Thank you.
Congrats, Chief.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Assemblyman Mathis again. I believe we're one of the only towns in his district in Fresno County. There's only two, and we're one of them, so we really appreciate. Yeah, really, in Kendra. So, we really appreciate you giving these funds for us for our fire engine. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, moving on. Next presentation is promotion of police department employees. Monique Gonzalez, Sergeant Joshua Carey, Sergeant, sponsors Police Department.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good to be with you again. Just a little process. I'm going to call the sergeants up one at a time. We'll do a badge pinning, and then photos, call the next one up, badge pinning and photos, and then we'll have a group picture as well. So, first, I'd like to call Police Sergeant Joshua Carey. Police Sergeant Joshua Carey was born and raised in Coors Gold and graduated from Yosemite High School in 2005, where he helped found the junior ROTC program for the school. After high school, he began classes at Fresno City College but had already taken an interest in service and enlisted in the United States Marine Corps. Sergeant Carey completed infantry training and specialized in missiles. Sergeant Carey was deployed to combat duties in Iraq in 2008 and Afghanistan in 2010. After completing his military service in 2011, Sergeant Carey returned to the Fresno area and earned his bachelor degree in software engineering while working at the Veterans Hospital. Unsatisfied working with computers and still feeling the call to service, although we assigned him a bunch of computer duty when he got here. He enrolled in Fresno City College Police Academy in 2017. Upon completion of the Police Academy, he was sworn in as a reserve police officer for the Kingsburg Police Department and was hired as a full-time police officer for a few months later in 2018. A few months later in 2018, Sergeant Carey was one of the first employees hired after the passage of Measure E in June 2018. After becoming a full-time police officer, Sergeant Carey then married his longtime girlfriend, Bianca, and having developed a loving relationship with the city of Kingsburg, moved his family here in 2022, shortly after the birth of their son, Jamison. Sergeant Carey was promoted to the rank of Police Sergeant in November 2022. In his spare time, Sergeant Carey enjoys reading, writing, playing with his son, road trips to the coast, and hiking. Bianca and Jamison are here tonight to pin his sergeant's badge, and also joining us tonight are Sergeant Carey's parents, Mike and Becky Carey. Congratulations, Sergeant Carey. All right, guys, this is a Konaic moment, so don't be shy. Council, you want to jump in there and get one with Sergeant Carey? Assemblymember Mathis, would you do this in the honor of? Happy to see you guys.
One more presentation.
Would Police Sergeant Monique Gonzalez come forward? Police Sergeant Monique Gonzalez was born in Fresno and raised in Easton, where she attended local schools. After high school, Sergeant Gonzalez attended Fresno City College for a short time before enlisting in the United States Army. While in the Army, Sergeant Gonzalez was promoted to the rank of Sergeant and worked in human resources and aviation operations. Upon completion from her military service, Sergeant Gonzalez attended Fresno Pacific University, where she obtained her Bachelor of Science degree in sociology. Sergeant Gonzalez began her law enforcement career in 2015 with the Fresno County Sheriff's Office as a correctional officer assigned to the jail custody, assigned to the jail custody duties. After working a custody assignment for three years, Sergeant Gonzalez was selected for a position in the sheriff's training unit. Just kind of as a side note, that is a highly competitive and very specialized unit that a lot of people apply for, and this many people get. Large agency, but a very small number of people who occupy that position, so that's pretty special. While assigned to the training unit, Sergeant Gonzalez also attended the sheriff's office, Peace Officer Modular Academy, Modular Training Academy, at nights and on weekends. This was in addition to her full-time job as an instructor and trainer. While at the sheriff's office, Sergeant Gonzalez had collateral assignments in the sheriff's recruitment team and honor guard, in addition to her duties in custody and her instructor responsibilities as a department trainer, and while attending the sheriff's academy. I don't know that you had a free minute for a year, did you? Upon completion of two of the three parts of the post-basic academy through the sheriff's office, Sergeant Gonzalez was hired as a police officer with the Kingsburg Police Department in May 20 of 21, and completed the third and final module a few months later. During her time off, Sergeant Gonzalez enjoyed spending her time with her children, Dominic, Mason, and Leila, who are involved in travel, baseball, football, basketball, and dance. Sergeant Gonzalez also enjoys traveling with her children to the beach and Disneyland. And you still don't have a free minute, do you? Sergeant Gonzalez is joined tonight by friends and members of her, for her assignment in the sheriff's training unit, her mother Carmen, and stepfather Eddie Rendon, as well as her son Dominic, who will be pinning her badge. And also present is Captain John Reynolds from the sheriff's office, her former commander, who's going to offer her job as a deputy sheriff right after I'm done here, but I'm on to you, John. Congratulations, Sergeant Gonzalez. Sergeant Carey, if you could come up and we could get a group photo with the sergeants, the council members, and Assemblymember Mathis? And the lieutenant? As you choose. It's your moment. Okay, everybody ready? Thank you again, members of the council. We appreciate your time and attention to this. It's always fun to do this, and you're very inviting, so we appreciate that greatly. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. More than half our audience. I'll wait till they go out before I continue. Okay, moving on. I will continue with our meeting. Next, we have public comments. This is time for any citizen to come forward and address the city council on any issue within its jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Do we have any citizens tonight that would like to address our city council? Please come up and just state if you're a citizen of Kingsburg or not, in your name, please.
Hello, my name is Ellie Dodd. I'm a resident here of Kingsburg forever, and I am representing tonight the Kingsburg Tuesday Women's Club and the progress and the not progress we're having on getting a mural put up for our club. We have applied for the grant and the mural, as you've seen other murals. However, we have a little bit of a problem because we don't fit in any of your categories. We're doing it as a club, and it started because we have celebrated 100 years as a club in Kingsburg. I believe we have, we are the winner. This year marks 102, and our mural wants to predict what we've done and things that we have given to and things that we have supported, from the historical park to downtown planters, to the, believe it or not, the women's club built the fountain that is no longer, is now a planter in Teapot Park. And so, we wanted to have all that depicted on our mural. So, we don't fit in the mural, and we want clarification. We don't need the money to pay for the mural from our, the grant. We have our own money. We plan to spend it on the mural. We have an artist who is a homegrown girl who has painted all over California, Colorado, wherever it took her. So, that's not an issue as far as finding an artist. They have been asking us to have her get insurance. Well, she's going to paint it at home. It's an eight by eight foot, and we were going to bring it to town, either have the city put it up, or we would hire a contractor who is insured and bonded and have them put it up. So, we want to get this done. Our goal was to have it done by Veterans Day this year. We didn't make it. So, we need some clarification. We need the okay to go and do this. We already have talked to the owners of West America Bank and the property manager. There doesn't seem to be an issue because it is a paneled mural, not painted on the building, and so it can come off and go back on if need be, if the building needed to be painted or whatever. So, we would like to get this project done, and we would like some guidance and some clarification from the economic group or whoever's doing the grants and the murals. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie. Anybody else in our chamber that would like to address our city council on any thing that's not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, I will close public comment. We will direct that to staff. Thank you, Ellie.
Okay. And who would be, staff will be getting ahold of us?
Yes, definitely. We're just not allowed to comment on things that aren't on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not. We hear you. We've, I'm sure we all took notes, and we'll let our staff, you know, we'll have them get in contact with you, and it's on our radar now, so, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
These are other members.
Yeah, thank you for coming tonight. Yes, thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate it. Moving on, consent calendar. Items considered routine in nature are to be placed on consent calendar. They will be considered as one item and voted upon in one vote unless individual consideration is requested. Each vote in favor of consent calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action listed. Approval of the consent calendar items include recitals, readings, ordinances, titles only, and adoption of recommended actions contained in staff reports. Tonight, we have 5.1 through 5.9. Do we have any council members that would like to pull a consent calendar item? No. Do we have anybody in the public that would like to pull a consent calendar item? No, okay. Then can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, consent calendar. Next, we have regular calendar. Development impact fee report for fiscal year 2022-23 and five-year SB 1693 report. Staff report by Finance Director Alma Colado, presentation by City Manager Alex Henderson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Ms. Colado sends her regrets. She wasn't feeling well, so I'm going to pinch hit for her here. The Mitigation Fee Act requires local agencies to submit an annual report detailing the status of development impact fees. Development impact fees are fees that we charge on eligible new construction projects, both residential and single-family. With the passage of Proposition 13 in 1978, local governments have increasingly relied on impact fees in order to mitigate the impacts created by new development. These fees are collected to finance the design, construction, and acquisition of facilities and equipment necessary to accommodate future development. In response to the growing use of impact fees, the state legislature passed AB 1600 in 1987, the California Mitigation Fee Act, which set forth standards and procedures for how impact fees are imposed, collected, and expended. The act requires local governments to segregate and place impact fees collected into special funds. These funds are held to finance the construction of the special facilities for which the fee was imposed. The Fee Act also requires local governments to prepare annual reports detailing the status of development impact fees until the funds collected are ultimately expended. To be in full compliance with state law, the city must either spend or commit impact fees within five years of collection or adopt a resolution that makes the findings as required by the Government Code, Section 66001 Sub D, every five years. The city has the following impact fees that we collect: our water system impact fee, traffic, traffic impact fee, public safety, specialized recreation, general government, sewer connection, storm drain system fee, and traffic impact zone fee, and as well as two separate park and recreation fees. In 1997, the California Legislature also made changes to AB 1600, the reporting rules, with the adoption of SB 1693, if the money, which stated that if money in development impact fee funds had not been spent, then 1693 requires the city to make required findings, regardless of whether those monies are committed or uncommitted, and they need to be made once every five years. Tonight, you have before you the resolution that provides the annual report for fiscal year 22-23, which must be completed within 180 days of the closing of the fiscal year, so this is compliant. But we also complete the five-year report every single year as well, so that we stay compliant with SB 1693, so that is also part of your report this evening. So, this report complies with both the annual and five-year findings as required by Government Code. This concludes my report, and our recommendation is to adopt a Resolution 2023-061, accepting and receiving the development impact fee report. These reports were originally posted on our website earlier this month, and so they also comply with the public review requirement of the Government Code. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from council?
So, we're supposed to use these fees up within five years, or just report on them?
If they're not used, so, you know, for example, a traffic fee, you know, we have to do a nexus study that shows what we're collecting the fees for, helps us set the rate, but it may take a long time to collect enough funds to actually construct, you know, let's say it's a traffic, you know, we're constructing, putting in traffic. you know, we're constructing, putting a traffic signal up because enough of that impact. So we just have to make a finding for the reasons why we haven't spent, which is what we have here this evening. And so there's just some reporting requirements, and if you don't complete those requirements, then developers can come back and say, you haven't spent, you haven't spent the money as you said you would or, you know, followed the, what's required by law, and so they can ask to claw that back. So we don't have to spend it in that timeframe, but we just have to make these findings.
Do we have plans for the impact fees at all? I mean, do we have a master plan for the intention of what we're going to do with these fees?
Yes, so the Nexus study will identify what we're collecting the fees for. Many of them, because the fees are intended to offset the impact of, of development. So it depends, some of it is just timing based, right? So for example, the water system one is likely will be used to offset when we have to drill a new water well. But we won't do that until, you know, so we update our water model every five years and basically tells us when we will reach that point of development, whether it be industrial or residential or combined. And then we'll identify those locations. So we do have plans for most of them, I mean, but some of them are, again, just dependent upon council's direction, but then also, you know, individual, you know, needs of the community based upon those impacts. Same for like sewer or parks or things like that.
Okay. One more question.
Sure.
The public safety is a negative balance.
Mm-hmm. Sure.
How, wa, how did?
Yes.
How did that, I mean, cause it, it's, and on Exhibit B, it doesn't seem like the, the, the big, the ending fund balance doesn't agree with Exhibit A. So it looks like it's been, I don't know, it kinda seemed like it's, has it been negative a while? Why is it negative?
Right, so part of it is because we combined, the last time we did our Nexus study, we, we used to have different impact fee collections. So there used to be a fire one and a police one separately. We combined those into a singular public safety one. More specifically to that particular fund, it, it has been in the negative for a while. When Fire Station Number Two was constructed in the early 2000s, part of those bonds assumed additional development. So it was, they were, the city was making payments against the impact fee fund. And shortly after the fire station was built in the early 2000s, the recession came, and we had very little development, and so that fund went into the negative. So we continue to make the payments, but from an accounting standpoint, you can see that the fund is in the negative and this past year, you know, so each year since, we no longer make payments out of that fund. And so it continues to build revenue to get back towards repaying the funds essentially that it borrowed against. But for this purposes, it will show in the negative until such a time that we get back to the correct, yep.
Can the specialized rec and the parking rec be used together? That's like 1.4, 1.5 million dollars.
They have particular areas that they can be used for. So I'd have to go back and look at the Nexus study specifically, but like, there's one that was used. I think it's identified as like neighborhood parks, and so those are used for smaller individual areas. I think the specialized recreation one was originally intended for a larger or community or sports complex type park. And so I'd just have to go back and look at what the limitations are on those from the Nexus study, and then we could, you know, report back on what those could be used for.
Any other questions from council? No? Well, there's nobody here in the public, so I'm not close public comment. Okay, then, recommended action by council. Adopt Resolution 2023-061, accepting the, accepting and receiving the Development Impact Fee Report for Fiscal Year 2022-2023. Can I get a motion to?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next we have 6.2. Transit Oriented Development Project, Draper Street. Report and presentation by City Engineer Dave Peters.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. So when we discussed this last, council directed staff to be back and, and specifically talk with Business Improvement District. Project was also presented to the Chamber of Commerce. Both of those groups generally had the same feedback. There was overwhelming support for the bike lanes on Draper, essentially tied to concerns of bicyclists on the sidewalks and have, and that appeared to be a big problem for, for those, those folks. There was concern about the phasing of the project, wanted to make sure it was done in a way where it would have the least impact on the businesses. And we assured them that we would do it in, in such a way where we, you know, wouldn't close the entirety of Draper down. We would do it in, in sections and phase it so that, you know, you, you would, you would have access to, to sections of, all sections of Draper. And then lastly, there was a, a desire to enhance the crosswalks on Draper Street. So let's, before we hit that, let's go, let's, let's touch on that. So generally, the discussion centered around these thermoplastic overlays that can be done so you don't have to take out the pavement, you don't, and, you know, jackhammer it out and pour concrete back. You can just lay these thermo, go back to the first picture. There you go, stay right there, yeah. Lay these thermoplastic mats down. You see on the bottom, you know, there's a heater playing, you heat them, they melt onto the pavement. I put these down in Fowler, it's on Merced Street, if you wanna go look, about 10 years ago. They still look like they're in very good shape. So this is something that could be done at the crosswalks as part of the bike lane project, since we're gonna be there anyways, doing, you know, pavement treatments and bike lane striping. Now we can move on a little bit. And there was a desire to have like a cobblestone type pattern. That was, that was feedback we got. And I, the point, the point of showing you this is that that's possible. There's a variety of different patterns, and you can see all the colors that you could use. So, you know, we could, staff could put our heads together and come up with something that's, you know, complements City of Kingsburg if the council so, so desired to pursue this. So going back to the first slide. So that was the feedback from, from the groups. In regards to the, the colored pavement, we mentioned that. There wasn't a great deal of concern one way or the other from them. We did explain to them that, and I'll explain to you now, Federal Highways has issued interim approval of colored pavements and bike lanes. And the only color that they're, that they've approved to date is green. And the reason for that is that, the reasoning they gave was that blue is reserved for handicap or accessibility markings. Red is now, as of 2019, I think, specific to transit. White is for striping, yellow is for striping, and so you start to run out of colors pretty quickly. You know, there, there are cities that have done a variety of different colors. You can see that on the internet, but, but, and they acknowledge that, but the only one that they're approving is the green. So this is all under the umbrella of liability. And so we try to, every time we put a marking on a street, we try to make sure that it, it, you know, complies with the manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And, and we, that manual is, was developed specifically so that there's consistency in the pavement markings through all the different towns and all the different states that you drive through. You know, you don't go into Arkansas and all of a sudden it's, you know, purple, pink, and, and blue lights. You know, it's just always red, yellow, and green, and same with all the markings on, on the pavement. So we try to stick with that as much as we can. There was also a discussion, FHWA also had some discussion on, on, you know, different non-standard pavement markings. So that would be, a marking would be either a word or the little bicycle symbol you see there. And they, they referred to anything that's non-standard, so not a stop marking or school crossing ahead or bicycles. So it's like flowers or dollar horses. They refer to those as street art and generally say you should avoid, avoid doing that. Just because people could get confused by that. They could see, you know, riding a bike, dollar horse, what does that mean? I don't know, they're staring at it, they're not paying attention, something could happen. So for those reasons, I think we're now kind of proposing just the standard white bike lane striping. If the council didn't allow, wanna pursue the green pavement marking. But what can be done, and their whole point behind putting the colored marking down was just to try to provide a little additional safety. What could be done is, and a lot of agencies are starting to do this, you'll see this a lot in Fresno and, and some of the other bigger agencies, is buffered bike lanes. So that's that hatched marking. So it'd be two white stripes with diagonal stripes in between it, and it just provides an extra buffer between vehicular travel lanes and bicycle lanes. So if, if we wanted to pursue something like that, we could. If we wanted to just go with the standard bike lanes, I'm comfortable doing that as well. So that's essentially an update of, of, of what we've been working on since we discussed this last. So happy to turn it over to you, answer any questions you might have or provide any direction to us.
Questions from council? On this agenda item?
I was at the bid and the chamber meeting and discussing this, so maybe I can add just a little bit. I was gonna do it later on our report, but it was overwhelmingly, there was overwhelming support. I know Stacy was at one of them, and Dave was at the other meeting. And don't think we had one negative thing. They were concerned about education and they had some great ideas on that. The chamber said that once it was done, they would be willing to like sponsor like a ribbon cutting and maybe work with the SRO and do like some bicycle, like a little safety thing downtown, like to educate the public. One of the other things, and I don't know if it could be added to the project, this was at the chamber on yesterday morning, was there was also concern about handicap parking on Main Street and that because of the, the planters, like where it goes out now at each corner, that it's cut out into some of those and that they're not like they should be. So they wanted to know, like, maybe that could be part of the project too, is looking at those and making them better accessible.
Compliant, yeah.
Yeah, because they were saying that, especially like with vans. And I liked it because we see a lot online, they're complaining about handicap parking, but not with a lot of feedback. And there was a lot of feedback there of specific reasons. And it was like being able, it wasn't consistent on which side had the hash marks where it was wider to get out with like a little chair, so van parking. And so that was brought up too, maybe consideration in the project.
Yeah, we could definitely look, look at, look at that. I mean, this project would include pavement treatment from curb to curb. So we'll be restriping all of those parking stalls with the project, and we can certainly look at trying to improve the striping. One of the hurdles that we would have is some of those stalls are just non-compliant from like a grade standpoint or something like that. And, and, you know, we have looked at that in the past, and it's, it would require significant street reconstruction or trying to raise the curb up super high, and all of that gets pretty expensive. And sometimes it's just not possible to do without just tearing the entire road out. So there would be some limitation to that, but if it's just, you know, striping type thing. The other thing that we've heard in the past is, you know, not all of the, the handicap stalls have the van accessible offloading site. We've talked about that before, and to provide that, it generally involves losing a space. And so, again, there's, that's been debated back and forth a lot about, you know, how, do we wanna lose the space? Do we wanna provide the offloading? So, but yeah, we can definitely have that discussion again.
And they loved the, what was it, plastic?
Thermoplastic.
Thermoplastic. And I think asked the question, like, does it look like plastic? And I think Dave, one of the things said, not unless you're like on your face.
Yeah, I mean, it, it looks pretty realistic and it, it is durable. And I would suggest if we do it, maybe we do one, one intersection and, you know, get feedback. If we like it, then we can do more. Cause that's just something that is literally just a mat that you roll out, and then you, you heat it, heat it up and melt it down and you walk away.
It would save public works.
We wouldn't have to do them all, all at the same time.
It would save public works time in the meeting, isn't that what Daniel mentioned?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, cause the, the crosswalk stripes would be thermo too. So I mean, yeah, he would, instead of painting them every year, he, you know, he generally, he may not have to do anything for, you know, five to 10 years.
And the reason was not only the aesthetics of adding to downtown, but it was also slowing traffic downtown, especially with the bike riders, you know, out there and signaling to the bike riders that there could be pedestrians in the crosswalks. That was brought up.
Thank you.
So I, I've actually heard quite a bit of the opposite since the last meeting about no support for the bike lane. I, and I, I think, I think that's which direction I'm kinda leaning towards. I, I just think that for downtown Kingsburg, that is 100% our trademark. The way that it looks currently is our trademark. People come here because of how it is now. I have concerns about adding a bike lane down the middle, especially because it's gonna get squiggly around the tree, correct? Where it's gonna alter around where we put our Christmas tree.
It, it would be on the same straight alignment. We would just, we would just break the line. So you, you can move over into it if you needed to, to get around the tree.
Personally, I really like the brick in the crosswalks. I just don't think that I can support putting a bike lane down Draper. It's just, this is, this is Draper. This has always been Draper, how it is. And I totally acknowledge, you know, Council Member North had a great point regarding the kids on the scooters and the safety for them and stuff. But I, I'm a big fan of use the other streets, park and walk on Draper. That's part of Draper for me, is walking up and down Draper. I don't really want it to turn into a bicycle thoroughfare. I don't know that I really even wanna encourage it on this street, which is really the only street in town that I feel that way. And it's just because the aesthetics of our heritage and how it is. I just think I would like to maintain what we have. So I'm personally not real supportive of a bike lane at all, but I like the crosswalk enhancements. I think that, that fits what Kingsburg is. That fits these upcoming months of November, December. This is our, our hallmark time. And I, I don't, I don't see it with bike lanes in the middle. I just don't, so.
I, I'm in support of the bike lanes, and I would like them green. I do think we've got people on bikes. We've got a whole lot more people moving towards getting out of their car, walking, riding. On my Christmas list for an e-bike. I think we're moving in that direction, and we cannot, I, I feel we need to address it. And I do, you know, I think people are nervous about having the bikes behind the cars. So there's going to, there's going to be some education that's needed, some comfort. And that's why I like them being green, because you can't, you, it's, they're there. They're obvious. I do think it helps with the safe, the safety element. And I would like to add, given the education element, teaching the kids to use them, teaching people to be more cautious around them. I would kinda like to see us expand the use of the green lanes so that it is more consistent in the community where we can. But I, I, I'm in, I'm in support of it. I think we need to do it and encourage people to do what they can to get some exercise and.
We did just get some green markings on the bike lanes that they put in on Golden State at the conflict points. So the little boxes of green, so.
At the chamber meeting, do you think there were 25 people there? Probably about 25 people. There were a lot of people from the public too. 25 people. There were a lot of people from the public too. And just asking the business owners, cause that's what we wanted to do when we talked to bid and chamber, to find out, cause they're down here all the time, if it really is an issue on the sidewalks. And so I asked, I think I asked like how many of them had had close calls? And it was more than half.
Yeah, at least 10. Yeah, at least 10, cause I counted them.
Raised their hands like quickly, that they've almost been hit. And they said that they've witnessed people like walking out of, they named a restaurant specifically getting plowed by a bike and everything went everywhere. And so, um, I understand that too, what you're saying, definitely. Um, and like I've been thinking about the green, like would that add to it or would that like take away from the looks downtown also? But I'm more worried about the safety. You know, that, that to me is a huge concern. And I think people will get used to it downtown. So, you know, it's like, it's a hard thing to, to weigh. But I am concerned about the safety of our business owners or the people that are walking out of retail as it's getting busy and, and busier. Um.
So I asked Chief, at the last meeting, I asked Chief for accents. They, they've had none. And that doesn't mean there's not any close calls.
Bicycles hit with cars?
Correct.
I'm talking about people hit with bikes.
Right, but they, they would get those calls also. And they would get them as, if someone was, if someone was injured.
That injured, yeah.
Would this be an option? I, especially the green makes me nervous if it's not right. Do we have an option of trying this maybe on one of our side streets first? So we can see what we're looking at before we put it on our, our main canvas? Is that an option at all?
Sure, yeah. I mean, we've got these similar bike lanes on Lewis Street. We could maybe do a test section if that's something you want to do.
I, it just makes me so, changing downtown, kind of in the blind, makes me just, I'm just not comfortable with it. I don't know, you know, if council's gonna lean that direction. Just be curious if we could go elsewhere first to take a look at it.
Could it be, um, done with white and then?
Yeah, we could do the bike lanes just with the white stripes and do the green later. Sure.
Well, I know, I was a little surprised when Laura said that it was overwhelmingly, the people were in favor at bid and the chamber meeting. And then again, that's all business owners. You know, I think we talked last meeting about, we, I'd like to see some public, you know, uh, some public input or, you know, a public meeting about this. I'd like, I'd like one. Because to be honest, I don't want to, I don't want to see Draper Street changed either. You know, um, it's just, you know, I don't see that many bicyclist up to, I've seen, I have seen these EV, electric bikes, you know, um, those kids are all over the place. It's mostly kids, some adults. But to me, there's just something about Draper Street and, I don't know, it's, it's like, it's hard to say. Is it a good thing? Is it not? To me, it might be a little safer for bicyclist and scooters, but I'm, I'm like Brandon. I, you know, this is Kingsburg. Draper Street is one of a kind. And, uh, I'm not sure I'm in favor of, of, uh, when I first heard it was a year or two ago, I was like, what? Bike lanes on Draper Street? But, you know, I know, I know the times are changing and all over the place, but, uh, I'm just not sure if it's for Kingsburg on our, on our Draper Street.
Vince, if I may, um, I did go to Chamber and it was overwhelmingly in support of them. I'm in support of them. I, you know, as a cyclist myself, I did a lot of biking. I've been through towns that didn't have them and have them now. Um, I think that they make downtowns and I understand and appreciate people's feelings, how they don't want to mess or tinker with what we have. But I'm all in favor of making things better, making things safer. And the towns that I've went to, I, I always go back to San Luis Obispo. They didn't have bike lanes when I went to school there. They do now. And it, it, it didn't hurt or didn't take away from the town in any way. And the town is amazing. And so I, I'm a proponent of it. I also had an individual after Chamber later that day, you know, didn't say, we don't need the bike lane or the bike lanes are bad. They actually said, well, what if we did them in the middle? But the middle is not what we went with because of a lot of safety concerns with public safety and, and things of that nature. But I like the bike lanes. I like the green color. I've seen it in other cities and I'm a proponent of anything that makes things safer downtown, then I'm a proponent of that. And I think that this helps. And by the way, I see traffic really going quickly down Draper nowadays. And I think that this would help, based on research.
Yeah.
This would help, maybe help drivers be more cognizant of the fact that there could be pedestrians and bicyclists. So I appreciate everybody's, you know, input, but I'm in favor of it.
Yeah, narrowing the travelway is a traffic calming measure that appears to have been pretty, pretty effective.
So he needs direction from us? It's not a vote on this one, right?
Direction, um.
What are you looking for direction for, Dave? What specific direction are you looking for?
Um.
Support or non-support?
Yeah, I mean, so, yeah, so we, we did submit a grant. Um, the grant involved these bike lanes and it also involved the curb extensions on Lewis Street. So I guess if there was a, and, and I think the council did support that grant at, at the time it was submitted. So if there's a reconsideration of that, where you want to maybe not pursue the bike lanes, I guess I would, I need to know that. And we'd have to go back and talk to the, the cog about, you know, what, what does that mean for the grant? Um, or if, uh, and if it's sort of a majority rule, move forward with the bike lanes, we can do that too.
Back then, we voted to pass this and you said you were gonna come back with the design.
Right. And that's what, and that's what we're doing at this point. So yeah, I guess that when we brought it back at last meeting, I think it was generally just to get feedback on the design, not, you know, to take an off-ramp and, and not pursue the project. So.
Cause we already did the grant application submitting.
So since tonight's not a vote, I don't know that we can give you that specific direction unless we're gonna bring it back at a later time for a vote to see if we're gonna pursue it. Um, if you're looking, if you're looking for.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, that's the fork in the road right now is, hey, complete the design with, with, with this feedback or, hey, bring it back to us so that we can formally consider whether we want to move forward with the grant or not. I think that's what I'm.
I think that the, the decision was made to do the bike lanes as part of the grant application. And so Dave was gonna come, bring it back to have you approve the design of the bike lanes. So it's, I think the, this direction tonight is whether or not, is whether or not this design with the green or not with the green is, is the direction that Dave needs to have. If the council wants to reconsider its decision to put bike lanes down, uh, Draper, then that would be an action that would have to be agendized and brought back to the council at the next meeting. So Brett, today it's just, oh, do we like the design? You know, and giving Dave direction now to proceed with that design and, uh, follow the council's vote to install the bike lanes.
I rest on, you know, obviously I'm one member, but I'm not in support of it as presented today.
Yeah, we never got, uh, like a lot of public input about these bike lanes, did we? It was on the agenda.
Yeah, and it goes back, it goes back to that big downtown study that we did, the, you know, focused on improving transportation in the downtown area. We went to, obviously the council, but we went to planning commission. We went to the Friends of the Depot. We went to the bid. We went to the chamber. We went and presented that report that included the bike lanes and a lot of other things too, you know, um, you know, a lot of, a lot of different types of modal improvements in the downtown area. And, and we got support from all the groups. And that's how we got to the point where we said, okay, hey, this is our, we're gonna implement this plan and this is our first phase project. And we're gonna submit a grant. And that's how we got here today. So yeah, if there's some reconsideration of that, then, you know, we could bring it back to the next council and, and discuss that. And there, you know, and there was, I would say there was pretty decent public attendance at those meetings as well. All, all the various meetings that I mentioned. Planning commission and.
Economic development?
Yeah. Yeah, uh, we went to a lot of different groups, yeah. I think, I think I got what I need.
Yeah, I mean, I like the project, Dave. I guess the design is, we could talk about the design. I mean, the thermal, what kind of thermal we put there is gonna be, you know, the green. Some people like the green, some people don't, but.
Okay.
But, but what direction are you giving Dave tonight?
I like the project. I would like to proceed with the project personally.
I feel like we already approved him moving forward in the grant when he submitted it. Um, was it two years ago?
Uh, we, yeah, we submitted the grant, yeah, a little over a year ago, a year and a half ago, something like that, yeah.
And he went to all the groups, got the input. Then when he came last time and we talked about whether to get public input or like the input to get, we asked him to go to the people that are here downtown all the time. It wasn't the public. It was the business owners and everybody who's down here all the time to get a perspective on is it an issue or is it not an issue? And I feel like he did that. Um.
He's in everything we've asked. I, I don't want you to take our, at least my lack of support is, you're not doing your job. It's, this is an aesthetic decision.
Yeah.
I've been doing this a long time.
So was there a consensus then for this design as presented by Dave with, um, green? And, and, uh?
I like the green because it.
I like the green. That's what I've got in my notes. I've got three, I got three members telling me, press ahead with, with the, with the bike lane design, with the green coloring pavement and two that have provided feedback that they wish that the bike lanes would not happen. So I think that's where we stand.
Are you asking about the crosswalk part also tonight or?
Uh, I, 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 I feel like that, that's kind of unanimously, um, something that we would put in the project as an ad alternate. Um, and I would obviously share with you the final one or two designs for that, including the, the, the pattern that we select and the color and that kind of thing. Um, but yeah, we, I, I'm, at this point, I'm gonna include that in the project as, as an alternate if we have money to do it. Uh, you guys ultimately, um, have to award the construction contract. And so that would be part of that award. Would, hey, do we want to do the, do the, the crosswalk treatment or no? You'll have another, you have a formal opportunity to do that down there. Yeah.
Okay, so you have direction?
I think so. Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Dave.
Semi-direction.
Let's move on then.
Well, we've been talking, they've been painting the bike lanes, we've been talking.
Yeah. You're, you're still at 6.3. City engineer, project progress report, presentation by senior, city engineer, Dave Peters?
Thank you. Um, so I'll just kind of hit some of the highlights of the report if, uh, if you have any questions to stop me along the way. Um, the 18th and 12th Avenue sidewalks are underway after, um, after a long time in development. 12, those sidewalks on 12th are done. Those have been completed. Uh, the majority of the demolition has been completed on 18th Avenue. And I believe the first sidewalks are gonna be poured tomorrow where they're permitting. So they're gonna start at the north end of the project and, and at Klepper and work, um, south. So, um, overall, the, the residents along the way have been, um, they've been very cooperative and there hasn't really been any issues so far. So I think we worked all those issues out during the design phase. Uh, Madison Avenue is starting, it's already started. They've already marked out for demolition. We're walking it with the contractor tomorrow. And either Friday or Monday, they will actually start the, um, demolition for the new concrete ramps on Madison. So that's repaving Madison Avenue from Stroud to, to Cam. Uh, we're working on our streets project for next year, which is gonna include reconstruction of 15th, 16th and 17th from Stroud all the way up to, um, uh, where the, the Lennar track kind of, um, stops or starts. And also Mariposa from 6th to 10th over by Roosevelt School. Uh, the dog parks moving along. We're about 30% complete on the design of the plans on the dog park. Uh, we've gone to all the groups and got their input. So that's moving along pretty good. The bids for the, the rapid flashing beacon project on Sierra Street open tomorrow. So we're hoping we get some good bids and can move forward. The city has already purchased the equipment, the flashing beacons. So, um, we're hoping to have that completed by early next year. Got our cow transparent after a long, a long wait. Um, Athol Park restrooms are completed. Um, we're doing one of, one more thing in that park. Um, we're gonna, uh, replace the shade structure and raise it up a bit so that it, it kind of, uh, avoids being vandalized. Uh, police station remodel is completed. Working on, uh, uh, waterline improvements on 15th, 16th and on Draper Street. Um, upsizing, uh, or installing larger diameter waterlines to provide fire flow in those areas. So we did a water model and it showed that we had fire flow deficiencies at certain hydrants in those areas. So we're installing new waterlines to, to correct that problem. Um, working on the Memorial Park restroom project. So that's gonna be a four, um, four unit, uh, pre-manufactured bathroom facility. It's gonna be located, uh, near the existing restrooms. And then we'll re, we'll convert those existing restrooms into storage, uh, areas. Senior such, senior center kitchen remodel is moving forwards about 60%. So, uh, we're expecting that to be in plan check by the end of the month. Uh, they just began, um, uh, on the fourth phase of the Kings Estates, uh, development, which is the fourth phase of the West Star Track north of Cam. Um, and then we have a couple of gas stations that are, um, moving through the development process. The, the, uh, the, the gas station that's proposed at Rayford Johnson Drive in Sierra Street, uh, we've actually approved plans and issued a permit for, uh, the construction of that station. And we're, um, in the plan check phase for the St. Clair remodel. Uh, and we also have received a, um, uh, set of plans for the Soho apartment. So we're in the process of, uh, plan checking and permitting those. A couple of other projects. This one we've been working on for a very long time, but it's, looks like it's finally moving forward. It's undergrounding of overhead utility lines by Roosevelt School on 10th Avenue. So that project again, has, it's been like 10 years in the, in the works. PG&E does essentially all the design. Um, the funding has been frozen a couple of different times for various reasons. They froze the program for a few years because the money was being diverted for, um, fire prevention. And now the money's been restored and they're moving it back, uh, um, moving it forward again. So hopefully in this next coming year, we, we get to see that, that project happen. Uh, we've completed a draft of our urban water management plan, something we have to do every five years. Um, and it's in public review at this point. We're developing a local road safety plan. We submitted our, our grant applications for all the federal, federally funded, um, or the federal transportation funding grants. And that, those will be reviewed and decided upon in January. So I'll come back and let you guys know how we did there. Um, and then SKF is, um, updating their master plan. We're working with them to provide review and comment on that. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council on this agenda item?
Yeah, a lot going on.
Lot of stuff, yeah.
The, um, electrical poles on 18th, are those being?
18th.
Yeah, where you've pulled out, where you've, yeah, where you're putting the sidewalks.
Yeah, no, those, those poles all stand, yeah.
They're just gonna stay there and?
Yeah, we're working around them. Um, so yeah, we're able to get the minimum ADA clearance around them and.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question. You said Memorial Park, it's a four unit?
Yes.
So that's like two women's, two men's? Is that what?
They're all gonna be unisex.
Unisex, that's right. Okay, just like the one.
I think, yeah, I, we talked to, with the Public Works Director, he felt like four was, was sufficient. Um, and that's fairly consistent with. And that's fairly consistent with what I've seen in other jurisdictions as well. Um, and yeah, they're unisex. I think, I think the idea is probably have a couple of them open on a daily basis and then for larger events, open up all four of them. But that's gonna help with the vandalism and that kinda thing.
And they're gonna be very similar to the ones at Athwall Park?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, very similar.
Where are they gonna be put?
Uh, so it's going to be, you know, if we're looking north, it's gonna be just west of the existing, um, structure.
Will there be, um, cameras on?
There's cameras in that park.
Could be, yeah, for sure.
That's important, we get a lot of teenagers in that park.
Yeah, and there's, I think there's already been some vandalism issues over Athwall. So there's, yeah, I think we have cameras over there as well, so yeah, sure.
Did you mention Heritage Park improvements?
Uh, I didn't mention it, I think it's in the report. Uh, we just got funding for that, so we haven't really started working on that as of yet, but it's definitely on the plate for this year. So, yeah.
Yeah, I see here where it says, project design will begin in December, that's next month.
Yeah, that's what we're, we're planning on getting started, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure I heard that right, I saw that right.
Yeah, no, it's definitely a.
I hear you talk about it.
It's a this year project, yeah, for sure. We just have, as, as of right now, I haven't, haven't put pencil or paper on that yet, but it's coming up, yeah.
Okay.
The idea would be to get that, that one probably, you know, done sometime in the springtime.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other comments or questions for Dave?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, next we have council reports and staff communications, community service commission. Nothing to report. Public Safety Committee, we met Monday. Uh, we had about a forty minute meeting. We, uh, now have, what's the correct term? Abbey, not bylaw. Powers and duties, yes, so. We, we got some good powers and duties that the committee came up with. I did inform the committee that on October twenty-fourth, the high school had their fentanyl education and awareness with, uh, I think I mentioned it our last meeting. Dean Cardinelli and Mrs. Smith Camp are there for two different sessions for all the high school kids for fentanyl education and awareness. And that was precipitated by the Public Safety Committee a year ago. It came up in our, our safety meeting and a year ago, we contacted the high school, but they had already, they had just had a, a gentleman in the little theater talking about addiction and stuff, so. Uh, Mr. Don Schumaker, the superintendent, wanted to do that this year and they did it, uh. I got a call from Mrs. Wargentine in early October and she's the vice principal there and so, yeah, it, it did happen. So that's a good thing for the high school kids to get that education and awareness last month, yeah. And then we also talked about, uh, our funds, where they should go and at this point, we're gonna continue discussion on the funds, uh, because it's so early in the year and we're gonna continue that discussion, so. That was it. Seven point three, Chamber of Commerce.
A lot of the discussion that I was gonna report on, we already covered. Uh, the other things they talked about was we have, um, Santa Lucia coming up. Uh, they just did their veterans breakfast also this last weekend, had a great turnout on that. Um, I believe they raised, veterans ate free and then the, um, the people that weren't veterans that came to have breakfast, they just put a donation bucket instead of charging them three dollars. And they raised over five hundred dollars from that to, um, I can't think of the name of it. The program where they take the veterans over to Washington DC. Yes, the Free Flight, and I guess we have some Kingsburg people going. Um, and so they donated the money to that. Um, it, they don't make money, they get donations, um, from some local, um, restaurants for the breakfast and some clubs. Um, Santa Lucia Day is December second. And, um, one of the things that was brought up is, uh, June Hess and her family really tried to manage the block for, um, the Swedish festival with actual Swedish themed games and they could use volunteers to help that day during the Swedish festival. Um, I think she said, uh, like nine throughout the day would be helpful. So if you know anybody that would like to volunteer, um, on that, Stacy probably knows more about that, that was brought up. And that was it for Chamber.
Okay, thank you. Seven point four, Economic Development.
Nothing to report.
Seven point five, Finance Committee.
Nothing to report.
Seven point six, Planning Commission, met last week. Uh, they came in a little bit early. Our city attorney, Mike Nolan, gave the planning commission, uh, some Brown Act training that they were, they wanted, they had asked for that at the previous meeting and so that lasted about an hour till about six thirty. And then also they voted on consideration for, I believe it was a hundred and five new units for West Star Construction. I believe they voted to, to approve that, so probably gonna come in front of us, Alex, pretty soon.
Yes, I'll come for you in December.
In December, okay, next month. And, uh, also Holly gave an update on, um, the projects that are coming up here in Kingsburg. She mentioned that Morgan's closed. Uh, the Arntz Building is, I guess, for lease, or is, is somebody interested in that yet, Alex?
Uh, yeah, so the Arntz Building is no longer under co-compliance, uh, so they, um, are free of that and so I think they're work, working with a potential tenant, so we had someone come in the other day, but, uh, it is for lease, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. And BOD's been sold and they're in, uh, are they, somebody puts, uh, site plans in for that yet?
Uh, they've reached out to us, but I don't think anything's been formally submitted yet.
Okay. And that was it? Oh, wait, and Bruin, yeah, trying to read my own handwriting here. Bruin Wing shut down is what some of the reports that Holly gave, so I'm sure we, everybody's aware of that anyways. Okay, seven point seven, South Kings GSA.
We have not met.
Thank you. Seven point eight, Downtown Business Improvement District.
Uh, we talked a lot about bike lanes. Um, we had the presentation that, um, Dave put together and Daniel was present. We already talked about that. Um, the next thing that they're working on is getting downtown decorated for Christmas. They're working on all of the trees on the corner, they've all been replaced. Um, they're working on, um, putting white lights on all of them and decorating, I believe it's this Friday, they said the seventeenth to get that all, um, festive for, uh, the holidays. And then the second thing they just completed, and then they're gonna do it again for Christmas, but a little different, is a rock hunt downtown. I don't know if you saw that this last month. Um, fifty rocks were hidden and if you find a rock, you could take it into RPS and you could get, um, a five dollar gift certificate to spend at businesses that were supporting it downtown. And so people are usually gonna spend one of the five dollars when they go into one of our businesses and then the business could go back to RPS and get their five dollars for it. Um, out of fifty rocks hidden, forty-seven were found. Um, three have not been found yet and, um, twenty-two of them were found by two kids. So they're gonna change the rules a little bit on that. They honored the five dollars each and they got twenty-two five dollar certificates to spend. And they're gonna change the rules just a little bit on that and they, I, I forgot to fail to mention the rocks were hidden at ten o'clock at night, the twenty-two were turned in like that next morning, so.
Can we hire them and put them on like the finance committee?
I know, maybe we were, um, telling Leslie Carpenter and her husband and hiding them, I don't know. So they're gonna do it again for Christmas, like with Christmas trees or something like that, just something fun downtown. Um, and that's it for bid.
Thank you. Seven point nine, Council of Governments.
Nothing to report.
Seven point ten, Council Member Reports.
I have something, I have two things. Um, our Five Cities GPA met, um, the first Monday in November, November sixth, yeah. The first Monday in November and we hosted here. It was a great meeting, it was, um, a lot of good information about what's going on. What they do is, um, it's called Five Cities, but it's really. Seven or eight now, is it seven? It's a lot. And so we come together and they work on our behalf to, um, kinda show properties that we have available to bigger businesses that are usually attracted to bigger cities. So by us coming together, um, as small cities, we're able to like pull our strength and, um, advertise a little bit better to draw in businesses. For instance, like T-Mobile or like Dinuba, Amazon, you know, those sorts of, of businesses. And, um, one of the things that we've been working on since before COVID was, um, rebranding and it's called Centerpoint. And so we worked on website branding and they're launching their website and one of the things that they're doing to try to bring people into our small communities is on this website, they're going to have a food focus and it's gonna be called Centerpoint Food Trail. You know, we do like Blossom Trail, all of those other things. So it's going to be each of our communities and they're gonna work with the city manager to determine, um, not chain restaurants in towns, but those just little hidden gems and put them on this food trail. And there's like an advertising budget for whether it's like, uh, the news stations or Fresno Bee, but also doing social media marketing with influencers and, um, really bringing them into the different towns and advertise a food trail and they have lots of ideas about that. It's supposed to be, did they talk about it at your meeting too? So I think it's supposed to be launching in the spring, did you say so?
Yeah, depending upon getting the information back from the cities, yes.
From the city managers?
Yes.
So it's exciting, um, to, I mean, we have lots of great restaurants that are hidden gems here, so, um, I don't know, we might have like fifteen of them now. And the second thing is just an invite for you, um, on November twenty-eighth, um, from five to seven, um, we have, we're having the Community Bilingual Night at Rafer Johnson Junior High. We're gonna have representation from, um, Congressman Costa, I believe they're in session, so he'll send a rep, Senator Hurtado and, um, Assembly Member Mathis. Um, I think he actually left their certificates right there. Um, we're gonna be honoring students, but just celebrating bilingual night. We're gonna have, um, the McFarlane Track Team from the movie, because Disney movie, they're gonna be the keynote speakers. So five to five-thirty is, um, Dog House Girl Dinner and then right after that is gonna be keynote and so public and you guys, if you wanna come, and cardboard cookies. That's it. Should be a good night in our community. Seventy kids will be honored that night.
Wow, that's a lot.
Okay, I had, I had a couple. Um, so the high school hosted the regional band competition and that went very well. The Viking Classic and, um, the city, I talked to the, um, the chairman of the boosters, I'm part of Music Boosters, my son's in the band, um, said the city was great, easy to work with. So, um, hats off to Adam, like to pass that along. Um, twenty-five schools came, the park was crazy. I hear I avoided it. We were in the stadium, but you know, they set up, they have the bands all set up throughout the high school and in Memorial Park there. So, um, that was a nice, a, a good, nice day. Um, went by the veterans breakfast that morning and that was a wonderful turnout. And, um, the last thing was I attended the task force meeting for November and it's exciting to see so many different groups getting together and collaborating. So, um, I always enjoy going to that meeting, but, um, we have a lot of great people in, in the community and that's what makes Kingsburg, um, such a wonderful place. But, um, it's great to see them working together for the better of the community.
I had, uh, two things. Um, one, I just wanted to give recognition to the Kingsburg High School Women's Volleyball Team. They won Valley and then they went on to State, won their first state game against San Ynez, won their second state game against Fresno Christian, won their third state game against the team up in Sacramento, forgive me, I don't know the name of it. But then they advanced and they came up a little short of winning the state regional, but I thought that was very, very impressive for Kingsburg volleyball to make it that far at state level. So I wanted to just give them a little recognition. And then, um, the other thing is, you know, um, the holiday season's coming up and so I know several people are doing the Ring the Bell for Caps and so I think that's a good program that, um, they still have slots open, so they join with Salvation Army on that. And if people don't know, like ninety percent of that money stays here in the community. I mean, sometimes people think Salvation Army and the money gets distributed throughout, but ninety percent of it stays here and so, um, it's a good cause and so if anybody had time to, you know, allocate two hours, I think the slots are two hour slots for Ring the Bell, they have several different locations. Um, the slots are filling up, but there are still some grocery outlets, Location, uh, West America Bank, Save Mart and Kingsburg Supermarkets, so, um, yeah, that's all I had to report. Good cause, great time of year.
I have a couple of things. I wanna congratulate Dave Wilson and the Cambridge Viking Football Team. On their pretty good season, they, last Friday, they beat Dinuba in the playoff, first playoff round and they came up a little bit short against Tulare, uh, it was a back and forth game, I went to the game Friday night. Final score was forty-nine to forty-two. I think there was two or three ties during the game. It was a very good game, very offensive game, so, but they came up one touchdown short. And I went to the veterans breakfast, was, was, it was very nice, a lot of people. Very good to see all the vet, all the veterans that showed up. And then last night I went to the Chamber Mixer, Dave, you were there and it was interesting to see, uh, they took us, they took us into their facility where they fabricate the Gus, the global, global unmanned sprayer systems and they are the only, uh, company in the world that, they said that there's a couple of, uh, people that do mowers. There's, there's some, there's some global mower, lawn mowers. Uh, these are, somebody's working on a tractor, but right now for sprayer systems, it's right here in Kingsburg, Gus is the only one in the whole world, so. And they're trying to expand their business. They just partnered with John Deere and, uh, they're gonna try and get, they're like in, I don't know how, how many different countries they said, remember how many countries they said?
Several, yeah.
Several, but they're, yeah, but they're trying to, uh, expand to like every country in the, that does farming, so. That's a good thing for Kingsburg, so. And that's all I have. Seven eleven, seven point eleven, City Manager Report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, just to piggyback on, uh, one of Dave's things, so the Madsen Avenue work, um, gotten a couple of questions. Uh, it's not a street widening project. I think they're seeing work being done on eighteenth and they think that we're gonna do something similar around Madsen, so it's just a repavement and some, some curb ramp, uh, work there, just wanna clarify that. Uh, tree lighting next Friday, um, after Thanksgiving and then Santa Lucia on the, on December second. Um, and then I was, uh, appointed as the Five Cities Rep. I'm now sitting on the Fresno, uh, EDC Board, so, um, I'm our, the new representative there, so, that's all I have.
Thank you, Alex. Congratulations, yep. Next, future agenda items, we have none. So next we have adjourned regular Chamber City Council meeting into closed session. Nine point one, Public Employment California Government Code, section five four, nine five seven. Okay. Yeah, thanks, Dave.